Please stand while Rick Patrick and Heather Demming lead us in the prayer and the pledge, please.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the blessings that you bestowed upon us for this day. Lord, we pray that he would be here in this meeting, move among us, and make sure that everything that's done in this meeting would be done according to your will for the veteran of the children of this county. Lord, we bid all, pray all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the February 4th School Board Workshop. The first Monday of each month is a workshop. This is a non-voting workshop. We will be discussing different issues. We have one amendment to the agenda. Superintendent attorney fees. This will be item four point three. The Sunshine Law requires that the school board meet and perform its duties in public. This meeting in public is an opportunity for the board to discuss and make decisions around its slated agenda. Citizens have the right to observe the meeting and hear all comments made by the members. School Board meetings, however, are not a meeting of the public, an opportunity for the public to comment during meetings. On behalf of my fellow Board members, at this time, I would like to invite and encourage members of the audience to sign up regarding district issues. Please begin by stating your name. You'll be limited to three minutes. This is your three minutes. The clock will not be stopped until your three minutes are completed. If you have a question, we will refer you to the proper person. We will listen and take notes during your three minutes. Lisa Roderick.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Roderick, and I have the privilege of working for Madison County School District. And I do say privileged because I did find this place through my work with the Department of Education and told my husband when I was out here how much I wanted to come work here. So I was excited to accept a job and move my family here to Cherry Lake last year. However, I have been a little bit concerned about some of the comments made regarding our grants and how those positions work, so I wanted to come and help clarify that some. Because we have a board policy in place in a union contract, what happens is if you have a union position that was filled, say, by a grant, and they were hired in November, and you have this other position who's paid through general funds, but they were hired in June. The school union says a reduction in force is one of those last man hired, first man fired kind of deals. What happens is that person that was paid from the grants removed, and that person from general funds moves into that grant-funded position. So I just wanted to help clarify that with the grants to help you all, because I know you have some tough decisions to make, and I just wanted to help you with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roderick. Lori Corn.
Good evening. My name is Lori Corn, and I'm a Madison County resident. I have attended each of the workshops you've held regarding the current financial crisis looming over our school district. Unfortunately, you've kicked the can down the road for so long that you now have only seven days left to meet the state's deadline for your plan of action. Because of your lack of action, many in this community have taken the proverbial vote of no confidence in this board and have lost all hope that you will do what we elected you to do, which includes making tough and unpopular decisions that in the long run will keep our school district alive. Instead, it seems all you have accomplished is to point blame. Mr. Alford, I was there when you specifically asked the superintendent to bring a list of proposed position cuts to the next workshop. Yet each of you now want to act like you were blindsided with that list. Mr. Daniels, we have listened to you state that someone who proposes to cut jobs has no heart and that God has your back. Does he not also have the superintendent's back? And Mrs. Gibson, most of us could read between the lines of your speech last week about how wonderful the former superintendent was, apparently implying that our current superintendent isn't. It seems you all are completely unaware that it isn't the superintendent's job to eliminate positions in order to reduce expenses. That's your responsibility. The superintendent can't decide to consolidate under-enrolled schools. That's your responsibility too. This board's lack of action is putting a final nail in the coffin of Madison County. What family or business would move here when we have no public schools to offer? I suggest you also need to realize that by not taking definitive and strategic action this week and instead choosing to just run out the clock until the state does your job for you, you are also ending any hope you have for the voters of Madison County to give you this responsibility again. I certainly will not. We want to know your plan to solve this, and we want it now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cynthia Dell Langston.
My name is Cynthia Dell Langston, and last week I presented the board with a letter of my vote of no confidence that I have witnessed in multiple meetings that there has not been any attempt to make a decision. Inaction on your part is going to adversely affect the residents and the students of Madison County. I realize what you have to face is very difficult. It's a very difficult job to have to pick and choose what schools are going to be viable and what are not. But that you must do because that is what you signed up for. Please, please, make some decisions so that we can go forward and still maintain our schools in Madison County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. George Williams.
Good evening. I've come to these last several meetings. Each time I've come, I left more determined that this board has not a clue as to what your real responsibilities and duties are. This board has done several things, and I'll make point of those things. The first thing is, when I pointed out to you about what your public policy says, you went and rewrote the whole paragraph because when anybody compares the old with the new, they can see exactly what has happened. You have effectively moved forward to stifle any other, any other opportunities for this public to have real input into your processes other than coming up here and just expressing right here. Secondly, you amended the agenda to include the attorney's fees for the superintendent. I would suggest that all the attorney's fees be discussed because the truth of the matter is, part of what's missing in this process is real transparency. I've asked several times relative to how do we get from forty-five-plus FTE to a hundred and sixty-two down? And every time we get right at the crust of getting an answer, you chairman would always intervene with one of your analogies. That's what happened at the last meeting. Thirdly, I would like to say, and I would like to strongly support one of the previous speakers. This board has effectively, has effectively, because of your indecisiveness, to do what really needs to be done. This board has nailed the coffin for the school district. The state will not allow you to continue in your current venue without a plan. And in the absence of a plan, this state will give an oversight board, and once that oversight board is finished with its work, you will no longer have positions, not viable ones. It is very important that you understand that every day you go without making the decision, that means that if you cut, there are going to have to be more cuts. Because the fund balance doesn't grow when you don't do anything, when you don't take corrective actions. So I would suggest that Mr. Reeves' fees be discussed. I would suggest that the union negotiator lawyer, his fees be discussed. And I would suggest that the superintendent and all other parties have adequate time to respond appropriately to their fees and what they're getting paid for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Hubbard. Cynthia Stewart.
Good afternoon. My name is Cindy Stewart, and I'm just here to put a face on the list that has been going around. My position was cut at Greenville Elementary without this board's approval, and I was transferred by the superintendent, who has the right to do transfers, as I understand. And I know the superintendent and the board, I know you're poised with making some very hard and tough decisions, and I understand that. I wrote a letter, I've written several letters to the superintendent and the board. I wrote a letter on behalf of the teachers at Greenville saying we understand we have to move and consolidate to one wing, and we were willing to do that. And then, when we looked around in the midst of moving, my position was cut. And I heard a board member, several board members, talk about the fact that they are trying to sustain the integrity of our instruction and protect our children. Well, what you have done to my fifteen first graders is totally interrupt their lives. They had to physically move their classroom, if you can imagine that. And then in the midst of our classes being in boxes and they're figuring out where to put this and where to put that, they lost their teacher, their beloved and effective teacher. And that's what I'm here to talk about. And I hope my position was not taken because I spoke out against what I thought were some things that were happening in Greenville that I thought was unfair. It looks like we'd already paid a penalty by having to consolidate to one wing, and now you're cutting deeper into our instructional staff. We only had eight teachers. So to take one of us away was a bit much. And I hope when I raise questions that are legitimate questions, that there's not a propensity to silence the questioning because it gets too close to what people should be thinking. So I just came tonight to put a face to what has happened here, and before the board had approved the cutting of my position, it was cut. And so I'm coming here tonight to say, if the board didn't approve it, then my position needs to be reinstated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Donnell Davis.
Good evening. My name is Donnell Davis. I have a couple of questions for the board and for the superintendent. Superintendent, how long you been a part of the board and superintendent?
Total of six years.
Six years. Ms. Gibson, how long you been a part of the board?
Two years.
Two years. Mr. Bar, how long? Sixteen. Mr. Daniel, how long? Ms. Farack.
Ms. Reeves.
Ms. Reeves. This would be my fifth year and my second time, there was a gap of time that I wasn't on the board.
Can we stop the clock, please? Can we stop the clock?
No.
For this question?
No.
Okay. Secondly, you say we've been going down this path for how long? Like ten years, right? Ten years this path been going. You've been here six years, four years on the board. You've been here two years as superintendent, right? You added more jobs since you've been here, and you was going down this path of destruction. You've been here five years, and it's been a decline, and you voted for that. Mr. Alfred, you say you've been here sixteen years, so I'm just trying to understand this path. If you seniors falling off the cliff, why did it have to come to today? That we come with this resolution that people have to lose their job, and you know this before now.
If you'll go back and recall, our unaudited fund balance was actually up from prior years. Our deficit right now is due to our third count being down.
That's accurate. Ms. Copeland?
Yeah, and Mr. Davis, can I quickly say something? I want to clarify, when I was pointing out the last ten years of the financial trend of the district according to the audited financials. Let me just give you what I was intending to say. It wasn't to point back at prior administration or operations because you had a very healthy fund balance, and it was managed well within those ten years. What I wanted to point out is that even though it was managed fine, it is simply a fact that with our general FTEs, the decreased in property tax funding, and in fourteen and fifteen, when the charters came on board, it's a general decline. It was a healthy fund balance back then, and it was managed well. It's just, again, we have a small deficit now, and it has a much bigger impact as a percentage on our fund balance. So we have to find out how not to have a deficit.
Mr. Davis, when I was elected to the board, our fund balance was just under twelve percent. When I was elected as superintendent, I was told our fund balance was right around four percent. Right now, it's our unaudited, and the auditors are in, it's projected to be four point seven eight. So we're, instead of declining, our fund balance is on the uptick, which is good. We reversed that trend.
Okay.
But, hold on. Our FTE has gone down. It's steadily gone down, and that's our problem. We've been losing students.
Okay, that's an important question to me and to you all. You know this is going to happen.
Excuse me, you've had your three minutes.
I didn't have my three minutes because he talked a minute and twenty-one seconds, so you should have stopped the time.
You estimate, no, we don't stop the clock.
Okay, can I ask you one more question?
We'll give you one more minute.
Okay, okay, this is, as a businessman and a business owner.
One minute, okay.
Okay, as a businessman and business owner, you got all these private schools. Where are they, where are they getting their funding from? Do they come to you to pass the law? You know how many students going to these academy school, right? You know how much money you dishing out to them, so it should have been a slow down pace. You see the fund going down, what'd you say, FCT, what's the balance?
FTE.
Okay, and every kid you send over to the private school, where that money go?
It goes to them.
Okay then, so if you know as a business and you know the process is going on, how do you, as a board, make all these decisions to continue to let this happen to the central school, to Greenville school? Because it's our county dollars where this money coming from, but you shifting over to these private school. Everyone can't go to the, it was a private school, but it's a charter school now, but all the funding, and they have a stipulation of who could come in that school and go in that school, right? So if we know this, how do we ship this money to them? Exactly. I heard somebody at the meeting last week when you and her, y'all two was getting into it, y'all was bickering and fighting about who paid for attorney fees. I want to ask you a question, Ms. Reeves. When she hired this attorney, did she get any consent from you?
No.
She didn't get no consent?
Okay, thank you very much.
Is that an active violation? I'm curious to know that, since the board didn't know.
Mr. Davis, thank you very much. We appreciate your comments.
Would you like me to tell you, and I will tell everybody, the board approved the attorney contract on June twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen.
I heard it in the newspaper.
So this board denying it, they all lied. When Mr. Webb asked, they all knew.
See?
They approved the contract on June twenty-seventh.
Can I get a copy of that, please? Can I get a copy of that?
You can do a public records request for the minute.
It's taking a long time. I just got this today. I asked for the whole process.
Well, we're kind of being slammed with a public records request right now, so I apologize.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Items for individual consideration. We're going to review suggestions. We appreciate the suggestions that people have come, given to us. Many of the suggestions cannot be implemented right now, but we're going to go over those. We receive them from the public in regard to finances, so... I'd like to have the board's input on this. Anyone?
I do think that we should look at furlough days. I think that that is a way that we could have the least impact within the classroom, and the teachers still be getting something for their day off or for the furlough day rather than us just taking it across the board. And looking at it, I would think it's probably going to have to be at the four percent, and one way to look at it, we could look at... Do you want to hear how we could look at it, Ms. Gibson, or...
You can go over, and then we'll refer to Mr. Reeves, because I believe he's had contact with the union in regard to the furlough days.
Okay, please.
I had a telephone conference with Mr. Dietzen this afternoon, who negotiates on behalf of the district with the union. He said that he had discussed with the union the board's position expressed at the last meeting about furlough days and possible across-the-board percentage reductions. He said that the union was not interested in negotiating on and across-the-board percentage reduction, and he said that the union was willing to negotiate on furlough days. They wanted an exact amount set out of the numbers, what it generates versus, and broken out by instructional transportation, et cetera, which I believe Ms. Copeland's working on getting those numbers together. Mr. Dietzen said that the union had expressed a willingness to negotiate on furlough days. It was his impression, though, that we probably should not expect four furlough days out of those negotiations, or, you know, that that would, he thought that would be a... Now, and understand, what he's saying was that the message you got from the union was they would not negotiate on the percent, and that it was his impression that it would not be the four days, so...
That four would be the max?
That he didn't think you'd get four, in agreement for four. I don't know what number that you would end up with.
In looking at, in looking at the, if you're trying to get at the four percent to raise the fund balance to where we could, where it would bring us up to, if you're looking at one hundred and ninety-six, that would be our instructional. You're looking at eight furlough days. For two twenty-four, which is the eleven months, would be nine, and for two forty-eight would be ten. And that sounds like a lot, but it would come to basically around four percent. And again, I think that that is something that we should at least look at. I do think that we have the two paid holidays, and we have two post-planning days, and we have the three half-days that we could work and possibly get another half where we could get the total of the eight for the instruction, and then for the post-planning could be for your nine and ten months. It would, that would be an option rather than having to terminate people and being able to at least make it through the year, where we can make it to June and then make the needed cuts we need to make. I mean, at this point, we are overstaffed. That's the bottom line, and we're going to have to cut staff in order to get it, to get back where we're, where we should be. But this does give us an option where people wouldn't lose their jobs, and we can make it to June. Now, again, I understand if the union doesn't want to do it, but I think it's something that we look at versus because our next step, if we don't do that, in my opinion, will be the cuts.
Yes, definitely, Mr. Belford. In other words, what you're saying, if they did this plan, the eight furlough days, eight, nine, and ten, I think it would be... eight, nine, and ten, I think it would be actually...
I would, and Mr. Copeland would have to run the numbers and would need to do like an itemize of what it would generate. But I feel that with that and the insurance savings, that would put us close to where we needed to be, where we may could not have to do the cuts. Do you, your thoughts on it, Mr. Copeland?
Yeah, I've got a pretty good, pretty good number on the general fund compensation and benefit savings that would relate to a furlough day. I'm just trying to get a good pencil on the little bit of, well, it wouldn't be a little bit, it'd be a good bit of overhead, transportation, and some other costs that would be saved along with just the payroll and the benefits. So, and, and let me, let me work to clarify that number a little bit better before I start spitting stuff out right here, but...
It was, one of the suggestions was a four-day work week. This is something that actually would have to go through the legislature since you're, we have to provide a hundred and eighty days. And that would not be a hundred and eighty days right there. And like I said, there's different things, stop transporting students within the two-mile limit. How about my other board members?
One time before we moved, when we had to do this, back when I was on the board in my first terms, we cut our twelve-month people to eleven and our eleven-month people to ten. I don't know if that's something that we could look at, Mr. Attorney, I mean, Mr. Reeves, if that...
Would that be something we could do immediately, Mr. Reeves?
Yeah, I think we'd have to look at it. The twelve-month to eleven-month, I mean, theoretically, what you do is you'd abolish the twelve-month position, create an eleven-month position. Same thing with the eleven to the ten-month. I don't know, though, that that's gonna generate the savings. Does that, and I don't know if we know this, does that generate savings prior to June thirty? I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, if you change their contract now, it wouldn't be a significant amount.
Right. I mean, that's where I think the, kind of the issue is that everybody's got to focus on, is you got a lot of good things here that need to be talked about, but if it doesn't generate the savings prior to June thirty, it's not an immediate thing that you really need to be...
In my mind, the two, the areas that are gonna save before June the thirtieth will either be furloughs or cuts. I mean, those are the two things on the table.
Or a combination.
Or a combination, those are the two things on the table. The other stuff, cutting people from eleven to ten and twelve to eleven, that would be for the next school year. But again, in looking at keeping things in mind for this school year, we have got to either do with the furloughs and the cuts. I mean, those are the two that we have looking at that are gonna be where we're gonna get this money from.
And it seems though the employees were receptive to the furlough. This is the reason why we have workshops. This is the reason why we take our time when we do it. I would never make an immediate decision on something that's important. This is the reason why we have public input. We want to hear what the public has to say. Even in your own home, I hope you wouldn't make an immediate decision when it involves a lot of money and involves a lot of positions. This is what we're doing, we're taking our time and looking at it, decisions will be made. Go ahead, Mr. Daniels.
If you will. My thing is, we had other, still back to the other options. And, Mr. Copeland, you indicated that we will have a savings as far as the insurance, right?
That's correct, and I want everyone to understand that there's two components to that, Mr. Daniels. There's the pro-share refund that we're to receive back. And we have, you know, we need to look at our union contract and we utilize that for the contract. We also have a pre-firm quote for a health insurance renewal right now that's two hundred thousand dollars, or roughly sixteen thousand dollars a month, cheaper than we're paying right now for the same benefits just as well. So to get any of that cost onboard, we'd have to do a short-year renewal, which we can do. But, Mr. Daniels, what that would do is save us sixteen thousand dollars a month from when we do the renewal through the end. And I wouldn't bank on any of that this year. That is one of those things that we're doing to help the district in general going forward.
So are you saying that based on the estimates and everything, there wouldn't be an immediate impact on the fund balance?
There will be with the pro-share money that's coming in. And I've already worked half of that into the budget until I can get confirmation on when the other half. But the decreased premiums, you're right, it would be, we could bank on that for next year.
Because I agree with much of the public. I agree where they say, basically, we kicked the can down the road. And I'll be the first to admit, I was a part of the situation, so I was a part of it. And I'm man enough to say, hey, you know, I was a part of the problem, so to speak. But right now, you know, what I'm hearing is, and I know all of us are, we're tired of going through this process of coming out to the high school each, every day, for week in and week out. So basically, what I'm saying is, if we can basically get a number or figure or put a number on the big screen and say, hey, six hundred thousand is our goal and here's twenty here, and, you know, and sort of we can get to a specific number as opposed to keep meeting and let me get back with you. I'll talk to, let me crunch the numbers, let me do the, you know... Because I think that's the only way that we'll get to a solution. So when we ask you a question about a specific, you know, something in particular, I understand you won't have a down-to-the-penny-dollar amount, but if you can just put us in the ballpark so that we'll have a good idea of where we are, so we can kind of get closer to where we need to be so that we can get some closure.
Back to the projecting out to the end of the year based on the adjustments we've made right now and what we see coming, not taking into account any of the compensation items that we're looking at. I understand where you're coming from. We're working off of unaudited numbers and I just hesitate. We say five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. Again, we're a twenty-five-million-dollar organization, it's hard to pull that out. I think we can sharpen our pencil and work on our restricted funds and just continue finding things. And I think we can get the number lower. But I hate to get up here and that not happen and then me have to come back and say... So, right...
Okay, well, a good start. For example, there are resignations, there have been folks that are retiring. So I'm just saying, we could just start there. So if we need six hundred thousand dollars and we know that four people are retiring and three are resigning, then we can calculate that amount and we can add that to the list so that we'll have something to work with here, is what I'm saying.
I understand. And, Mr. Daniel, some other things that I just don't have... You know, we're trying to utilize our food, our food service has been doing real well. It's a grant-funded program. And I don't think we've allocated expenditures to that side like we could have in a legitimate fashion. That's an area right there that I'm working on bringing you back a number on. Again, we've done a much better job this year of expending our grant funds fifty percent of the year than we have in prior years. But I agree with you. We're tearing things apart to find legitimate moves. And as I pluck away at that and get some definite things down, I will update everyone accordingly and that can be a quick process.
But you do understand where I'm coming from.
I do completely.
The purpose of this workshop is to get us, you know, get to the number so that we can get some closure, so we can start going back to having some normalcy. You know what I mean? So when I ask a question like how, you know, based on the number of resignations and retirees, just a rough idea, because I don't have the, I don't, I'm not sure, I'm not the accountant, so I'm just asking for a rough idea, that's all.
I'd like that, too. I know that you're working very hard on a lot of different things that's gonna help this, but they haven't come to fruition yet. If they do not, by the deadline, if they do not, what do we need?
Mr. Daniels, Ms. Williamson, Mr. Copeland and I have already started working with DOE Finance Office and helping to start getting some suggestions. They've actually had Mr. Copeland pull out different things out of our budget and he sent it over to him Friday. And so now we're just waiting to speak with them again.
So we don't have a number of what we need? I mean, nothing in the ballpark of what we're gonna need to...
I tried calling Mr. Eggers today, but we've been playing phone tag. So we'll wait to hopefully get maybe some further suggestions.
It's really hard to sit up here as a board and decide what we need to cut, what we need to do, when we don't know how much. It's like trying to balance your checkbook when you don't know how much that the bank says you have.
We still know we need that amount, so...
Mr. Reeves?
One thing, Madam Chairman, that might be helpful. You've got a recommendation from the superintendent on positions to cut. Those positions, I assume that the math was worked and each of those positions has a certain savings attached to it and then that adds up to a dollar figure. That, those calculations should have already been done.
Yeah, I'm sure they have those numbers calculated.
Now, that's a question I have, Mr. Reeves.
But that might, if we go ahead and get those work papers, that shows the number you're shooting for? It shows...
It was, but at that meeting on the twenty-fourth, you did not continue the meeting and you also did not table that recommendation. So now you'll have to make a new motion. And those positions were calculated based off of February first date. So we now will have to recalculate everything again.
What was the amount given to this? We have never...
Five hundred thousand, it was in the letter that I sent you.
This is five hundred thousand?
That was just, that would amount, actually, that amounted to six hundred thousand.
Because a lot of these are grant positions, I realize that.
It amounted to, it had grant-funded positions, but a general fund, a general fund position would pick up the grant-funded position. So you can't look at that. Somebody else would have to go into the grant-funded position. Or it would, as I explained in the last meeting or the meeting before, my meetings are running together now, I would split up the grant-funded position and whoever takes on those duties will pick that up. But yes, somebody else will now have to go into that grant-funded position, even as Ms. Roderick just stated, as the last in, first out. Somebody else, a general fund position person, will now go into the grant-funded position.
I have a question concerning two on the list that were from grants. And both of these positions are a hundred percent paid out of grant. Is the parent facilitator from Title I and the coordinator of adult ed and CTE are both grants? So the savings, I hear what you're saying about going to someone else. However, on the other side of that, one of the positions I'm aware of, possibly the second one, had a high terminal pay. So I question if someone is having a high terminal pay and even if it's paid over three years, if their terminal pay is above seventy thousand dollars, I don't know that we are not being upside down by the end of it. When you look at the terminal pay, even though it's a grant position, by having them no longer in that position, I don't know that it's putting us upside down at this time with the financial shape we're in.
Has the terminal pay been looked at at all?
Yes, it has.
I've built the terminal pay into, we've had a moving list of positions and while the total is like Dr. Pickle said, I dropped the terminal pay in based on our ability to pay the sick, a portion of it out over the thirty-seven months. And so we can update the numbers there because of the little bit of a shorter timeframe out through the end of the year. And I will be glad to get that to you in the morning.
I mean, I understand that, but the point I'm making is if you're supposedly saving twenty-five thousand on a person that's going to someone else and their terminal pay is twenty-five thousand, how is that saving anything? I mean, it looks like it'd be a wash in accounting.
It would be if you had to pay the terminal pay out over, in one lump sum like we had to do. And you're correct, that even with the three hundred, or the thirty-six-month installment option does shrink what you net at the end of the day. We weren't upside down on any that I recall utilizing the installment portion, but it does reduce the net savings to the district. And again, I can update that and provide it.
It just looks strange to the public. And again, again, it just doesn't look right if it's a grant. And I understand that you're using that grant to pay for someone else, but again, at the end of the day, to the people out in the community, it doesn't look right.
Well, I have a quick question in regards to moving the district office to Central. Is that still on the table or off the table?
The district office or the annex?
The district office. That was, we discussed that thoroughly in the retreat.
Well, that's kind of been, up in the air, waiting until we, when we started proposing cuts, waiting to see who would be left. And then I've got to keep the district office open. I can never dispose of that building. So we'll at least have somebody up there. And at this point, I'm just trying to wait to see who we have left to try to move.
If we put a freeze on the steps, would that help with the fund balance at this time?
That would come into play next fiscal year and it would help for future, beginning next fiscal year, leveling of compensation, but it would have no effect between now and the end of this fiscal year. Those steps for this fiscal year have already come into play in September or October, somewhere around there.
Mr. Copeland, back to the district office, did you crunch the numbers when you guys were looking into that earlier as far as the savings to the district by moving to Central?
We did, and if you recall, I think it was the January fourth meeting we had where we quickly pulled together the utilities and overhead.
I'm trying to get some numbers out you.
Yeah, I understand, but, Mr. Daniels, I've been here a year and a half and you never come to me and ask me.
Just roughly, I feel better if you just throw a number at me.
Yeah, yeah, I think we were, I think the utilities was somewhere around twenty-nine thousand dollars annually. If, you know, you're gonna, if we're gonna keep the building, you'd have to run some basic, we could mothball it if we couldn't get rid of it. And, but again, those are, I think that's a great plan and...
Mr. Copeland, I have the numbers written down. The district office electric was twenty-seven thousand. Greenville's was fifty-three, Lee's was forty-nine, Panettis was forty-two. Central's was three hundred and eighty-six thousand and the high school was two hundred and forty thousand and Excel was nineteen thousand.
Okay, and so the purpose of the Greenville collapsing the wings was to save? Do you have an idea of how much savings that, did we talk with Tri-County or any?
Mr. Daniels, I don't have that answer. I've been, I can work on that, I just simply, I don't have that.
I do have a study where Mr. Pryor came out and looked at some things and there were some issues and, so it's in my office. I can make copies for you.
You would, I mean, we would think that the electric bill would be down in the first, I mean, I don't know that it's been long enough that probably this next month we may see the savings in the bill, but you would think it would have come down significantly if you have one wing shut down and the gym's not being used at this point with electric or with electricity. So, I mean, hopefully that will come down and... So, I mean, hopefully that will come down, and hopefully all the schools are being observant of trying to save electricity. But again, that's great, and we need to do that, and we should always do that as best practices. But again, these cuts are gonna have to come from personnel and payroll.
Yes, I agree, Mr. Alfred. Let me address the Annex right now. In our last meeting, we decided that on February 15th it would be vacated. They have to find a place at Central, and the credit union would also be finding a place. I've been asked to consider delaying that until March 1st due to the FTE survey that's taking place right now, and the plant survey. Mr. Ginn is trying to, actually, he's tried to contact the person in DOE who's in charge of that, and he hasn't had any luck yet. But what is the pleasure of the board on that?
I don't, I mean, I don't have an issue with that, that's fine. I mean, again, I don't know that we're gonna be able to get it sold by then, but we just need to be working toward it. But the most important is the FTE survey and making sure that we're correct with that.
Everything runs smoothly, right.
I mean, we have to be correct with that, and again, I want to do all I can to work with them on this, but we just, we have to make a conscious effort to do all we can to save electricity and work toward that goal.
Well, Ms. Williamson?
That's fine with me.
Ms. Bell?
That's fine.
Mr. Daniels?
What was the issue?
Last month, we decided that as of February 15th, the Annex would be vacated. It was decided it was gonna be February 15th. Due to the FTE taking place right now and the survey that's a mandatory done by the DOE, they haven't been able to get the person, they asked if we could delay it till March 1st.
Let me ask you a question, I got a question. Isn't it gonna cost them to move? Is it gonna cost the Annex to move the ESE department over to the Central School? Would it cost anything?
I mean, it's just like, they'll have to move their things over there. I mean, I'm sure the county, the school system will help them move.
But it won't cost any extra money?
Not that, nothing, it's gonna have to be done if we're gonna sell it, in other words. We hope to sell it. We don't have a buyer yet.
If it's not sold by a certain time, you know, like you said, if you put your house on the market, sometime it takes a while. We don't need to even scrap a penny, I mean, we don't need to even spend a penny if we in this deficit.
I don't know that we're gonna hire movers to move them.
No, it's not gonna cost, we're not gonna get professional movers to do this.
Right, right, but I'm just saying.
So, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Right.
But in other words, we've already agreed on that, you know, that we would, they would be moving. We're just giving them an extension right now. But it won't be any, I wouldn't think, a huge expense to move them.
That would be small in comparison that was undertaken when Madison Middle School and Madison Primary Schools moved to Central.
Right.
So, I mean, again, it's-
And we did it, no problem.
It's gonna require work of people to do it, but we're not gonna hire anybody to-
No.
I mean, there're gonna be employees.
There'll be, mhm, that's right.
We also have to find a place to move the credit union, and Ms. Gibson did not tell you, the credit union has also asked to wait until, they would prefer to wait till after there's a buyer or something. They have auditors coming in the end of the month, but they are also interested if we are going to possibly sell it, but possibly putting in a bid. So they would prefer not to have to move out. And we're trying to locate the agreement. There is an agreement with the District and the credit union that we provide them space. So they would prefer not to have to move out, and then possibly if they place a bid for it, and then move right back in.
Well, would March 1st be good with them?
I will have to check with them, Ms. Shiber, tomorrow.
If you'll let us know about that, please.
And we have requested the survey.
I think I mentioned that, Mr. Ginn has been-
But we made contact now, we were able to make contact.
Oh, you did make contact, okay, all right. Mr. Daniels?
No, I was saying that was good.
Okay, any more comments on the public suggestions? Again, I want to thank them. I know there's been teachers that have sat down together. They have brainstormed, they've come up with some wonderful ideas. A lot, some of these were already, we've discussed, and-
One comment that I received today is going up on millage, and again, I mean, as a taxpayer myself, so many, so few people pay property millage that I'm afraid that if we were to go up on it, and that wouldn't affect us right now, that would be later down the road, that it would be a select few who are burdened with paying the money. I mean, our schools are funded by property taxes, not by taxes on products in the store, and that's an unfortunate aspect, because so many people do not pay property taxes, and it's a select few. And a lot of the select few are elderly and people who are retired with no children in the schools. So I don't know that that's something we should be looking toward. We should look toward, in my opinion, of managing what we have more efficiently and working within the staffing table that would make us where we're being able to be efficient.
And I think you've been honoring those select few, like you said.
Right.
There's a select few that pay taxes, and we cannot burden them.
I mean, again, that's-
That's the way it is.
I mean, yes, but again, we just, we need to be more efficient, and we need to be more within what we are generating and have that many people there.
Mhm, well, that's why the possibility of the furlough days and also reduction in staff, that's a possibility.
Mr. Reeves, back to a question concerning the furlough days. Did the union give a number or not?
No, sir, they were, the union had just said they were not willing to negotiate on the percentage across the board decreases. Madam Superintendent, you can say that.
If you, Ms. Kinsley had said that they had surveyed, and they had 48% of their staff respond, and they were willing to do two days, if you recall at the last meeting when she spoke.
Well, with that being said, and looking at the total numbers of what we need, I do think that personally, we need to accept the two and then negotiate toward others with good faith in that one of our paid holidays is coming up, President's Day. And if we let that slide past, and that's another one in the area that we're gonna lose. And again, as, and I'm only speaking as one board member, but I want us to be able to save all the jobs in that we can make it until June and not have to let people off.
That would be the ideal situation. They'll require quite a few furlough days, you know, like you mentioned earlier.
Yeah, now, what Mr. Dietzner had told me was that he didn't know what they would ultimately agree to. You're not in a position to accept two and then negotiate further.
Right, I understand.
There's gonna be a final number that they're going to come to. So we don't know that yet, and I think what the superintendent was saying was that at that last presentation, the union representative had said that they had polled their members-
That they had surveyed.
And thought that that would be the number, but that's not binding on anybody.
Well, I mean, I feel, I feel that we need to present our solid numbers where it can be presented to them, and we need to present a Plan B that if this doesn't go through, then this is what's gonna happen.
If I could make a suggestion?
Please.
One of the things that's been going on, and I think y'all have expressed this, is that where, when you bring up something, you have to have numbers calculated, and that legitimately takes a good bit of time. The proposal that the superintendent made previously, those numbers have been calculated. They were calculated as of the end of January. It ought to be that those numbers, having already been calculated, that can then be modified to a new date, say February 15 or March 1. And then you all would have those numbers and exactly what each of those cuts would generate. Then if you got the, you've got the numbers now, I think, for the furlough days, those give you actual numbers that you can work with. If you got those, you could set a meeting, say at the end of this week, make your final decision. And that's within, that's prior to the February 11 deadline for giving notice that there was a deficit in your fund balance. And that's just a suggestion, but, and the point there is not to say that y'all have to do that or don't have to do that, but those numbers have already been calculated.
Right.
Just to bring them current shouldn't be quite as big of a deal.
But my point, though, Mr. Reeves, is, you know, they didn't have a problem calculating, coming up with those numbers. It wasn't a problem. But when we ask for the numbers of other things, then all of a sudden, you know, you dance around the question. So I get what you're saying. They calculate it, they figure what the numbers are for the cuts. But when I ask about certain things, certain, you know, other specific other items, and then it's, let me get back with you. That's my point.
Mr. Daniels?
If you wouldn't mind providing that information ahead of time, we could have that information. It took us two days going salary position by salary position. We spent two entire days in the boardroom calculating those salary figures.
But what I'm saying, though, Dr. Pickles, is that we all know that we're facing this deficit, right? So it would be common sense for you to say, well, I have three or four folks resigning. Let's see, that's four hundred, two hundred, seventy-five thousand dollars. And then I have so many that are retiring, that's four, you know, and just calculate.
Actually, actually, one of the-
That's what I'm saying, we ought to be-
Actually, one of the retirements was actually calculated, actually, two of the retirements were calculated in those position cuts.
That's what I mean, so that, what are the numbers for those, is what I'm saying. We have to know what we're up against. We're making progress, but we don't know how much.
I understand completely, and I can give you, I can tell you right now, what we're looking at, moving back to the food service fund in a legitimate fashion is a hundred thousand dollars to change our budget, which would be five, you know, not quite fifty thousand dollars for the remaining portion of the year. I've told you last month about a three thousand dollar contract savings per month, but, Mr. Daniels, if you don't mind, and I don't mind coming to see you, I could, I can show you a little- I understand what you're asking, and I can sling the numbers out there pretty accurately. But like, when you referred to the consolidating the overhead of the offices and stuff, a very good point, and we brought it up, we need to do. That right now, putting a pencil to it, I know it can't be done between now and June, so that simply wasn't the top of my priority list. And so, but I'll follow, your questions are very fair, and I'll get you some quick answers on some more specifics.
I'd like to ask a question. It involves the recommendations. I know you, Dr. Pickles and Mr. Copeland spent a lot of time on this. You said this is six hundred thousand dollars right here?
That's including the insurance call share.
That includes the insurance, okay. Are there any other options that you would consider other than this? So, because you just, you spent a lot of time on it, but I'm wondering, did you consider any other options?
I was directed by Mr. Alfred to bring the list of the positions, and I had one week because I had to meet with Ms. Roberts and give her a list of all the non-instructional. So we spent an entire two days trying to generate the positions to get back and get ready for that meeting.
Well, you succeeded. I mean, this is what was asked for, and we got it. But I'm wondering, was there any other options considered?
Ms. Gibson, can I interject there? And I spoke to Mr. Reeves earlier, so this, and having spoken to any of the union folks myself yet, but, you know, we did look at the percentage cuts also, and maybe that's totally off the board with them. But for every percent of our general fund payroll, and I'm gonna give you a pretty good specific that we're able to cut, you're looking at about, you know, fifty-five thousand dollars with benefits on a percent. If we could, if we could, it, one percent almost equates to what one furlough day is. So I just think if we could, you know, if we did a five percent cut, you know, you're looking at close to three hundred thousand dollars there across the board to the general fund. I bet we can tighten our belts between now and the end of the year and find the difference. So me, that's easier, but it's not what the employees want, and that's what's important. So that is the other option we picked apart.
With a furlough day, furlough days, Mr. Copeland, what would you guesstimate or estimate that would be?
A furlough day would be somewhere around sixty thousand dollars a day.
Sixty thousand.
With benefits.
So that's about the same as-
It's about the same as a one percent.
So four furlough days equates to four percent?
Essentially, you'd be real close.
And the six hundred thousand that you said, Dr. Pickles, that's counting the savings on the insurance, and we may not have that before June? Is that-
No, that's already the one part that Mr. Copeland put in.
So the part that we will get from the insurance?
That's the part we've already received, or well, received by the end of this month.
So basically, if this was approved, as it is, plus the insurance would be included, that would be six hundred thousand dollars right there.
I don't know if that has all the terminal pay built into that right now, which I have laid out. We've changed this thing quite a bit. So again, I'm trying to answer all the specifics I can, but I don't want to give you an incorrect answer without, you know, looking over things one more time.
Right, I think this has been part of the delay, there's been confusion in regards to the recommendations, and just confusion with information, let's put it that way. I know you put a tremendous amount of time into it, I know Dr. Pickles has too, but I think in presenting it to the board, it's been, there's been some confusion. And we're not gonna run, in other words, we don't rubber stamp things. We have to take our time and make sure that we make the right decisions. So I'm sorry if we've taken a couple workshops. I don't, to me, it's worthwhile to explore the possibilities.
And from my understanding, the position cuts I got, they did change a few times, so I had to, it's, but I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Any other discussion regarding the recommendations?
I mean, I think we need to-
Suggestions?
I think we need to decide on the number of furlough days we want to present to the union to have something to go back to them.
I'd rather have a good cushion myself.
Well, I would, again, I would rather go at around four percent.
That's gonna involve the, what you described earlier?
Right, I mean, it would involve, it would involve that amount, and again, that's at a four percent. And you know, we don't want to do this, but I certainly don't want to have to let people go in the middle of the year. First off, it would be devastating to them, their families. And secondly, for us as a district, I don't know, it's gonna be very hard for us in the future to get teachers next year to come here, not knowing that we're gonna stand behind a contract.
And when they started this year, they expected to finish the year. And not only that, we have to keep the children in mind. This is a disruption, it's a disruption, a lot of stress, and it affects the children. Now, I mean, this is, but it's gonna, that's a hard hit, I realize that, if they do the eight furlough days. But that way, the positions all remain, they won't, after June, they won't all be here. But that's something we can present to the union.
I mean, it is a way that we're able to save jobs until this contract year ends. And again, do I want to do this? No, but this is the only option I see, rather than to cut positions. I mean, if someone at this table has another option, we need to hear it at this point.
No other options other than cutting positions?
I've been asking all night, but I can't get the answers that I need. I understand what you're saying, but I've been raising the question about the other options all night long. But I don't get the answers, though, man. So that's why, that's why I'm, the cuts are a last-ditch option for me. My point last week was to get as many people to the finish line as possible. And we deserve the answers that we, to the questions that we have. And I understand that it's short notice on a lot of these questions. But my thing is, there should be some numbers that are presented to us that we should have that say, hey, based on what has happened so far, based on the reaction from the list, and these people were shifted, moved, or resigned, or left, or whatever, there should be, have been some figures that have been going on up to this point. And that's what I'm saying, we keep referring back to the list, but- We keep referring back to the list, but there, there are a lot of things that took place as a result of this, the list already, but we don't have any numbers to work with.
Well, we, we know we have this, these six here, and, and looking at the total savings, Mr. Copeland, we would look at their grand, like with benefits, it would be their-
You're, you're, it, that, that's correct, and then we'd have to back off terminal pay.
So, so some of these, some of these people who are retiring could have a high terminal pay?
They could, oh, yes.
Okay.
We do a separation checklist, sit down and go over exactly how many vacation days and how many sick leave days they have. So very few of those that either left or resigned have a high terminal pay.
So you're saying none of these six have a terminal pay?
I don't, I don't know who's on your list. I haven't seen your list.
It's, it's the list that's on our, it's the list that's on our, in our packet.
The, the six you've been, you've just completed.
I, I would suspect that some of them-
Yes, no, there's no high terminal pay.
There's none?
No.
Well, again, even with that said, we, we can get the total based upon their total, total with benefits. And, and some of these, some of these salaries, I mean, it should be, again, I don't have the numbers here in front of me, but it should be quite a savings, because some are... Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Copeland, for, for that, I mean, seeing-
Going back, Mr. Alfred, to the eight furlough days, now, would that involve all the employees?
It would, it would be, one hundred and ninety-six day would be eight, two twenty-four nine, and two forty-eight ten.
So the instructional, that would be instructional, then eleven months and twelve months?
Where the issue is, and Mr. Reeves could speak to this, for the people with lower salaries, I mean, they can't be below minimum wage, is that correct?
Yes. But now, now, furlough days wouldn't affect that, because-
Right.
With furlough days, you're decreasing compensation, but you're also decreasing the time at work, so that, that wouldn't be an issue there, that'd be an issue if you were cutting percent.
And, and Mr. Alfred, I figured that, when I figured the percentage, that I, I backed out the whole job codes that involved any that had issues with bringing them below minimum wage.
Okay.
So my numbers did not include those.
So, Ms. Reeves, for, so what you're saying, the other employees could be included in the furloughs, or not?
Like the paires and the-
Yeah.
Bus drivers and the-
The, well, the only thing I could see is, to the extent that you're talking about doing a furlough over a vacation day, then in that case, you're reducing salary, but you're not reducing hours worked. Theoretically, that could be a, a, a minimum wage issue. But if you're reducing, you know, if, if someone, if, if you're taking them off of work for a day and not gonna pay them for a day, that shouldn't create a minimum wage issue, because you've reduced hours worked, at the same time, you've reduced pay.
But in some of these positions, if you have people off of work, even if though you're not paying them, you're gonna have to get a sub.
Well, these days didn't involve students.
Some, some of these, three of these days, Ms. Williamson, are half days.
At least my days didn't.
And two are paid holidays, and two would be post-planning days. So the post-planning wouldn't be affected by your employees less than one hundred and ninety-six, or even the two-
Right.
It would be the two twenty-four and the two forty-eight would be the post-planning day people.
So your hundred and eighty day people, like bus driver, a hundred and eighty days, if the bus driver's not on the bus, who's gonna move it?
Well, again, it would have to, I guess if you were to do it, it would have to be during the holiday. The holiday day would be their furlough.
And a half a day wouldn't help with that either, because you still got to-
Right. I mean, probably for them, the holiday day would be their only furlough they could do.
I, I think what you're, when, when you talk about furlough days, though, we build in extra days into the calendar for hurricanes and all of that. I think what's been said before is, we have two of those extra days. So I think two of those days, what you're considering is, you would actually not have children at school. So no one would come to work or school during those two days, and that doesn't bring you below the hundred and eighty that you have to have by statute. The others, I think, when, when you say a half a day, I think what you're saying is, they're at school the first half of the day, students are not at school the second half of the day, so that one, if you furloughed that second half of the day, you wouldn't need a, a sub or anything else. The same thing with your holidays. Now, the, the issue there, I think, is to the extent you had some very low earners that were, were losing those holidays, you would be decreasing salary and not decreasing commensurately work time. You could conceivably put that, bring up some minimum wage issues, right?
I think that would be the pares and the bus drivers, and probably the lunchroom people.
Yeah. Now, the, the, the bus drivers, of course, they're, they, they wouldn't be paid during those holidays anyway, do they? And I'm asking, Mr. Copeland, wait.
Do you, what was your question, Mr. Reeves?
The bus drivers and all, they're, they're only paid for the days they're actually transporting the students, I believe, but I, I could be wrong.
They get, they get, you get a few paid holidays.
So that, they would be paid, like, for the President's Day and-
But half a days, they still gonna have to work.
Right. Right. So that half a day, you would not get any savings with the bus. So I, I think there's certainly savings, the two days that school is in, that you would furlough those days, there's certainly savings there, and those two certainly wouldn't, or shouldn't create a, a minimum wage issue, because you're decreasing amount, time worked at the same time. On those holidays, it may get tricky.
Walter, do you know what starting pay per hour is for bus driver?
Excuse me?
Starting pay, like if you're a first-year bus driver, what's your hourly rate would, would be? That's, that's probably one of your lower-paid positions.
Actually, it's custodians are the lowest paid.
Oh, okay. What would the custodian be?
Give me just one moment. Now, this is the last, the, the salary schedule that's approved for this year. It has not been adjusted, it has not been touched, so, which is specifically asked your question, you asked about a bus driver. A bus driver on a regular run, your salary is eight thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars a year, that's step zero.
What would, per hour, because they work four hours a day?
I'll have to look up a specific bus driver and find that information. But it's based off of, even though it's per hour, that's, it's an annual salary and it is divided by the number of hours in a row.
So it's like a hundred and eighty times four, divided by that number?
Good. To get a ball-
Mr. Alfred, could you give us a, sort of a little synopsis of what you went through with the scenario, the, about the furloughs, for, for the board?
And, and looking at the, you, you want to get to like four percent-
Right.
Is what you're shooting for, and how these numbers came up is if you, four percent of one ninety-six is eight, if two twenty-four is nine, and then two forty-eight is ten days. And if you were to figure the percentage based upon their pay, it comes very close to it. And again, this is, this is giving them something other than us just taking, taking money from, from them. It, it would be an option, and again, we, we need to decide if we're gonna include the, the people other below the one ninety-six in days, because that's, that's what we're looking at, and when you hear that these salaries are low for them, so I, I don't know, I, I mean, I don't know, and Mr. Reeves is saying two days would probably be the most we could.
I think two days are where you're gonna get the most bang for your buck, and the, you probably would not have minimum wage issues. Now, remember, the, for the folks you have minimum wage issues, you just simply wouldn't cut them as much.
Right.
And, and, but the, the, again, if they're at minimum wage, they're necessarily making a lot less, so you're not talking about a lot of dollars there. Those are actually, if, if you have to keep them at the minimum wage, it's not gonna cost you all that much.
I mean, if, if they're at the minimum wage, I don't know that we should even be looking at them really, to be honest with you.
All right. Well, but, but remember now, what you're, what you're talking about is furlough days.
Right.
So you're, if you cut it, do a furlough day, and you cut out vacation time and, and cut out salary-
I see.
You may have to add back to get them up to minimum wage. But again, it's not a lot of money, they're necessarily at the very bottom of the, you know, of, of the salaries, of what's being paid, so it's not a lot of cash.
I have a question in regards to the ones who are at the top. Since we focusing on the bottom, we putting so much emphasis on the bottom, let us focus, can we ask, what are, what are the ones who are, that are at the top, non-union? What are they willing to sacrifice?
Well, they're, they're gonna be doing, I mean, if you're at the top and your daily rate is two hundred and fifty dollars a day, you're gonna be giving up ten days at two hundred and fifty dollars a day, compared to the teacher who's at a hundred and seventy dollars a day, giving up eight days. I mean, they're, the people, the higher up you go, the more you're gonna give up, based upon just your hourly rate, your daily rate, and how many days it is.
And of course, we're in the mix too, Mr. Daniels.
Right, exactly. And what, I, I recommended that on day one, if you can recall.
The, the weekend, I went through and did everybody's salary at three percent and four percent, and, and the higher you make, the more this could be out.
And we, we, the board has a, we, we have our own version of, of budget as well. Is it something that you've seen within our, the board's budget that we can trim back on to help?
You know, y'all already do, you're already doing your part on the travel reimbursements and things like that, subscriptions, you know, just any, any travel and, and things like that, but we're, we're not, if you recall our December financials based before we had this FTE decrease, we weren't out of bounds with the board expenditures versus what we budgeted. And if you give me just a few minutes, I can pull it up and tell you exactly what it is, but, but again, that's an area, we have three thousand and something general ledger lines, and they all wrap up in different function codes, so we have to look at the totals and make sure we're not out of kilter versus where we are at the year-to-date, and the board expenditures were not out of, now, that's not to say we can't budget lower going forward, or we don't have to spend up to our budget.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely recommend that we definitely cut back, trim, do whatever we need to do as a board. I think we should lead, we should take the lead and lead by example, you know, so whatever, we should look at the board's portion of the budget and start there, for sure.
Well, and I, I'm only speaking for myself, but this past winter, when we went to Tampa, everyone who paid and was down there the whole time, our bill was close to eight hundred to a thousand dollars apiece that the district did not pay for, so we, we are, we are doing that now, and, and that's been the, I mean, this is, this has started recently, I mean, this, in Christmas, we started.
Yeah, so I wrote a check for nine hundred and eighty something, which is, we mentioned that the people down there said, what are you paying for? I says, because we want to contribute.
Right.
So we did, I wrote a check for almost a thousand dollars for that. So, so right now, we're, this is a, an option, let's say. We can present this to the union and see what they have to say about it, Mr. Reeves?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you can present it to them.
You know, I think it's, it, by doing this, by the eight, nine, or ten furlough days, and correct me if I'm wrong, that means that we'll save all the positions until June. They will be notified.
Well, again, Mr. Copeland could speak better to that, but I would think that we have, we have, as of right now, and again, if anyone has any other ideas, please say, but as of right now, I see either the furlough, or us making the cuts, or our way to make it to June. Furlough will save positions.
We, we absolutely, as Mr. Daniels said, we need to identify every single thing we can cut, but you're not going to be able to get over this hurdle without cutting compensation. It's almost eighty percent of our budget, it's just not feasible to get it done. Now, I'm with you, I want to do the least amount that we can, but it's not mathematically possible to get to that point at June thirtieth without compensation being cut one way or the other.
Right. Either by furlough or cutting positions.
By furlough, cutting positions or percentage decrease.
And other options.
And other options, absolutely.
But, but we've got to have the other options. Now, Mr. Alfred presented this.
Right, because I mean, you're, you're kind of just limiting it to just the two options, and I want to be clear, that there are other things that we are looking at, or have looked at, and have considered, and, and we're, we're kind of easing back toward to just the two options, furlough or cuts.
I, again-
No, furlough, cuts, or what, or, or other options, we got to weigh out everything, everything's gotta be on the table.
What other options do we have that would get us that amount of money?
Well, that's what I've, Ms. Williamson, I've been asking all night, I've been asking the other options and asking for numbers, but I'm not giving any numbers back.
I gave you the specific ones I had related-
So that, that kind of leads us to, back to the, the two items on the table.
Mr. Walter, with the furlough days, would that take some of the people names off the cut list?
I think from your, your partners up there, that's the intent. Do the furlough days, tighten our belt, identify the other areas of cutting outside of compensation that we can, that we know are definitive numbers, that we can recoup before the end of the year, and the intent is not, my understanding is in not have to make any position cuts.
Our, our hope-
But if we're not giving those eight days, and we have to take two, with the two furlough days, would it take some of the people off the cut list?
It'd take, yeah, it should take some off, but not all.
You're, you're looking at a furlough day, again, you're looking at fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars a day, fully loaded.
I mean, I'm just, if, if they don't agree to allow us to take the eight days.
Yeah, absolutely, I would think so, yes.
Sure.
But, but, but again, we need to look at what's gonna bring our, what's gonna bring our overall budget up as high as we can to the three percent, and that's gonna be with the total amount of furlough days we can get to get us close to the four percent. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line, I mean, you, you've got it, we've got to try to get the fund balance up to where it should be, and-
Realistically, will we get eight furlough days? Or do you think that we will get the eight furlough days?
That's gonna be a union decision.
I'll take that.
So right now, where we stand, we, we, we have a proposal to have eight, nine, or ten furlough days, basically.
And, and again-
Five thousand, fifty-five thousand dollars.
Excuse me?
Five, fifty-
No, this is not time for public input.
Y'all not listening?
This is, this is not time for public input, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Alfred.
Again, again, it would be at, although the numbers look high, it would be at an average around four percent.
Yeah, that would be four percent.
It would be around the four percent. I mean, the number of days look alarming when you look at it, but it's, I mean, the four percent is four percent, but it's, it's just, it's four percent, and it is less than what was presented earlier at the five.
Well, this can be presented to the union, and we'll see what they have to say about it. Otherwise, it'll be two or three furlough days and positions. I think that's our all chan, our alternative right now.
And the other options.
Well, no, you've got, we've got to come up with other options.
Yeah, well, I've been asking all night. I've been asking all night.
But, but where, where, I mean, I mean, I think where we're, we, I guess we need the list of people who are retiring and what they're generating, and that could cut some off of it, but I don't know our other options at this point would, their options for the next school year. I mean, I don't know, I don't see how that would affect us right now, other than the people who are retiring. Those six people who are retiring, that could affect us in that, in that their savings could affect us if there's not terminal pay, and, and that needs to be figured in, but other than that, I don't know that, like, cutting, if we were to cut APs back to eleven months, that will not be until next year where we would see the savings, or cut people from eleven to ten, that will be next year. I mean, I don't know this year, other than the people who are retiring, could be what we would see the savings in. Mr. Copeland, is there any other?
Just like I said earlier, shifting stuff to the grant-funded employees and, and utilizing food service, we've, we've moved utilities to food service, we've moved trash pickup to food service, it's never been done, that's legitimate expenses, and again, for a specific number, I, I'll give you a hundred thousand dollar savings right there. We're gonna, I'm just telling you, we're picking through this constantly, and I want to identify everything we can. In addition- and I wanna identify everything we can in addition to any compensation decreases, so...
Our, our deadline is the, is next Monday on the eleventh, is that correct?
Yes.
So we gotta move quickly to make a decision.
And I'll confirm that with Mr. Mark Eggers at DOE, because when I corresponded with him on Friday, um, he seemed to think that the deadline would run from Friday for the fourteen days, I'd rather work off the shorter timeline, but...
We need to go ahead and do it as soon as possible.
It's not that much longer, I mean, it's coming, whether it's the eleventh or the fourteenth, or whatever, it's coming.
Because in the process, we still gotta redo our cut list if they're gonna do the furlough days. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, like we said, we have a lot of suggestions, but a lot of them are not immediate sugge- there is something we cannot do immediately, so we can, what is the consensus of the board with Mr. Alfred's plan, presenting it to the union?
We can present it.
We can? Miss Bell?
Yes, you can present it.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
We can present it to the union, we can see, hopefully we can maybe get some answers by the end of the week on that.
We, we got until Monday to make a decision, is that correct? We, we got into Monday, so we need to do this quickly, so we need to make...
Well, I, no, we're gonna meet again this week, we're gonna have, yes, we're gonna, and, and we'll know how the unions stand by then.
And when we meet again, we need to have it a special session so we can vote, because it's got to be done.
Yeah, it'll be, we will be voting, right. We've gotten the information, we will be voting on it. Anything else in regard to the suggestions?
Um, we, we could look at, um, Mr. Copeland, if, if we are needing to, um, look at the, any of the ten months, I mean, any of the eleven months that could be cut to ten, that would save during the, save during this fiscal year, we could look at that for the cut, possible cuts.
Can that be done, Mr. Reeves?
Yeah, I think it probably can, um, you, you need to, uh, again, you'd be abolishing those positions, and then the eleven month and creating a ten month, uh, position.
And the twelve to eleven?
If it comes down to it, and the furlough days are not accepted, I don't know that we're not gonna have to add some more to that list, because we've taken some people off that list, is what I'm saying.
Absolutely.
So, so again, it's gonna be, it's gonna be more people added if, if the furlough days are not accepted, and people we've removed.
They already said that they will at least take two, so we know two furlough days is per, pretty much a guarantee. Now, ten, I don't, I don't see them doing ten.
Can you get the price savings for the twelve to eleven, and eleven to ten? To have those figures and see if that, that's an option?
I don't want any more names added to that list, so we're gonna do whatever we can to try to deal with what we have at this moment. If there's two furlough days, we need to take some people's names off that list, if, if it's gonna come to the amount...
We took, took a few already off.
Y'all have took some off?
E S C and the supervisor.
Y'all get to take them off? Okay.
But, but, but again, I mean, we, we've gotta be cognizant of the number, our total number, when it comes down to it, I mean...
We, we have to realize that we're in a small district, and we're over top-heavy.
Yeah, but they're not sure what the total number is, so...
No, the number of people that we have, employees.
But hopefully, hopefully by that night, Mr. Copeland, we'll have an idea of what, where we're at. Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Could I ask for clarification on the twelfth month to eleven month, and eleven month to ten month? Are you referring to the administrators or clericals, or do you want...
I don't, I don't know that, I don't, I don't know that administrators would, if, I mean, that's the question for Mr. Reeves, I don't know that administrators would even be a savings for us for this year, would it?
Um, well, I don't really know the answer to this, but let me pose the question. When you go from a, the, the, the month that you lose going from a twelve to a, an eleven, is that June? Is that the month you lose? If, if June is the month you lose... Yeah, so if that... Yeah. So, if, if June is the month you lose, then yeah, there should be some savings, you'd save a month's worth of...
It'll help.
Worth of salary, yeah.
Well, yes, Dr. Pickles, if that's the case, I mean, we need to look at, everything needs to be on the table with it, I mean, especially, um, your, I mean, yeah, it needs to be looked at, because again, if, if the union doesn't, um, accept these furlough days, and at the four percent, we're gonna be back almost to stage one in having to look at where we're gonna make these cuts.
And cuts, cuts will have to be made.
Can I mention something? We had, uh, also, we, we spent a great deal of money on, uh, subs, and that's a cost over and above your fixed compensation cost, um, we had talked within about proposing that if district staff had time, I wouldn't mind doing it if I could pull away for a day a month and let us fill the sub positions and not hire any between now and the end of the year.
What was that, Mr. Copeland?
The district staff work as subs?
District staff, I, I would not mind assigning one of my, uh, staff once a month, each, each of them to fill in for the subs now, to, uh, we, we have some big dollar figures. Now, that's gonna take money out of some subs' pocket, I understand that, but I'm just coming up with ideas.
I, I think it's a great idea. I mean...
I think it's a good idea, too.
And, and the, the thing about it...
Excuse me, thank you, remember, ladies and gentlemen, we cannot hear when there's noise out there, thank you.
I think it's something to worth be looking at, to look at, I mean, I know that our sub pay is, um, astronomical of what we're having to pay out for substitutes. Yeah, yeah, I mean, not that subs are being paid a lot per hour, but what we're having to pay total, number of subs we're having to get on a daily basis is unreal. Um, but back to your question, Dr. Pickles, that, that is something worth looking at to see, um, truly do, I mean, I know at the outline schools, um, Ms. Joseph had made the recommendation, which I think's a great recommendation, of principals, um, being cut to eleven months for the outline, um, that, that would be a cost savings, and in all reality, that would bring, um, her salary position closer to where it would be for a lead teacher on the salary schedule for an administrator. So, I mean, I think that, that is a great idea, a great recommendation she made toward that, and, um, and, and at one time, our APs were at, um, eleven months, I think.
And then they went to twelve months?
Then they went to twelve, and again, nobody on this board is against people working the twelve months, but if, if work has to be done, and we see it has to be done, then at that point, it needs to come back to us for additional hours or contract. We, we can't, we're not in a position to have blanket twelve-month positions, because it does add up. I mean, the same with secretaries at some of the places, I mean, even if they were to go, which I know they're in the bargaining unit, but even if, like, even if it's ten less days off of what their total is, the bottom line is gonna be a savings to the district, especially if during the summer months, when it's slow, and, um, it possibly could, it possibly could work, there's no way it could work during the school day, because they're overwhelmed during the school day, but during the summer, I know, and people who have worked in those positions know, that it can be very slow, and you're sitting around wondering what you're gonna do.
I appreciate the letter that Mrs. Joseph sent us, too.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph.
All right, um, any more comments on public suggestions? All right, so that what, Mr. Alfred, what you suggested will be presented to the union? Hopefully, we'll get some response of the later part of this week.
Uh, again, and, and I, I just wanna reiterate, no one on this, I can't speak for everyone, but I, myself, we do not want people to lose their jobs, but I, I don't see where, I don't see where we can build up the fund balance to where we're at a healthy state other than doing this or making cuts, and I know that we have other things coming, but I'm saying, we have to be realistic about it, that if those things do not come, we have to have a plan where we can say, "Okay, well, this is gonna have to be done."
And actually, managing your employees is probably as mo-, is, is as important as managing your money. I mean, we've gotta, we've gotta be realistic.
And hopefully, hopefully the numbers will come back, and we, we don't have to do as much, and if, if we were to see that we're not gonna have to do as much of a cut, then we won't have to do it, but again, we, I, I think we need to be, um, proactive with this, in that if this doesn't go, then we have to have an alternative.
Right, and that's to explore all options.
Well...
I mean, we're going in circles, we're going in circles, and I hear you, I hear you, but still, at the end of the day, you can't deny that our, we were, we were at a, at four, a little over four point, four point five, six, or seven, I forget what Mr. Copeland said, around December the twenty-second, we came back at January the fourth, and we, we understand that we were facing this deficit. So my thing is, it's not the staff, it's not the teachers, not their, it's not their fault that, that in two weeks, we went from four point five percent to one point whatever percent, it's not their fault, so that's why I'm saying, it, 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 we need to explore all options before just drastically go into this, that option, that's all I'm saying. And I, and I, and I just noticed the shift where you, you guys are just, just kinda referring back, or resorting back to the either or, as opposed to weighing out all options.
Well, I think, I think that night, everything would be on the table, I mean, if we get the numbers that, I mean, no one up here is just wanting two options, I welcome a third option, but as of this date, I have not seen a third option.
And even to this day, we, we still try, you know, some have, have said, or trying to figure out how, how the, the names and the, the positions on the list generated in the first place. We get some, say, "Well, it was the prin-, the principal's, it was input," or whatever, the principal say, "No, we didn't have a say in it."
Well, that was Dr. Pickles' recommendation, the, the list, that's where that came from. If we're finished with the...
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes, sir.
I participated in that survey about the furlough days, and I, everyone knows I'm administrator, I have no problem doing a furlough day, and, and whatever, whatever we agree to, we negotiate, whatever, whatever the casing takes, my question, will the board, each of the board members, take an equitable percentage of furlough days?
Oh, we, we've stated that over and over again.
Will each board member take an equitable percentage base of a furlough day that's equitable to my salary, or some other administrator's salary, or a teacher's salary, to make it equitable and fair across the board?
I'll do whatever's fair, Mr. Stallman. I, like my, I've been donating most of my salary anyway, I just keep on going.
Anything, Sam, anything to save these folks' jobs, man.
Yes, sir.
I, I think we've said that all along, though, haven't we, that we were...
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that's fine, you can be specific, I mean, but I think, I think there was no problem with that, on any board member. In other words, we said we were in it with the rest of the employees. Okay. All right, uh, let's move on to, uh, four point three superintendent attorney fees. This was brought to our attention, I know that on January twen-, at the January twenty-fourth meeting, we sent, um, we talked, we requested, uh, all invoices and checks, and where it came from in the budget, I haven't received, I also sent an email on January twenty-eighth requesting all invoices, checks, and writ, and where they were written, uh, which funds they came from, I haven't received any information yet. Dr. Pickles?
Who did you send that to?
Well, on the twenty-eighth, I sent it to you. On the twenty-fourth, I read something, I think it was Mr. Webb that made the comment, and as soon as he got through, I read this little thing about saying, "We need the information," and then the twenty-eighth, I believe I sent it to you, Mr. Reeves, and requesting the information. Now, we're not saying that, you know, there's, there may not be any problem at all with it, I was always under the impression that, um, that you're entitled to an attorney, but it was used maybe if you were being sued, or a, a very rare occasion.
You said on what date?
The what?
Well, the invoices, um, I thought Mr. Copeland and everything was gonna give you the breakdown, it's my understanding you also already have a copy of it, so I'm not sure why you needed it again, and I thought Mr. Copeland was providing you the budget, I don't have that budget, it comes out of the board budget.
What I'd like to, what I'd like to see is, for instance, if, if they're paid nine thousand dollars, why are we paying them nine thousand dollars?
I have a summary, and, but I will sit down and give that to you. I have, I had a public records request that I had to do a summary for.
Well, summary may satisfy us, then.
If I can, I...
Go ahead.
I, I think there may be some confusion about the term invoice, I, I think what they're talking about is, there's a bill, an invoice that comes in for attorneys, from me, from everyone else, and that...
I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I haven't, I now have your bills, but no, I do not see your bills.
Okay, the, well, I send invoices, the other attorneys, I think that's what they're looking for, and I think, and I think Mr. Williams said it, uh, you know, my bills, their bills, everybody's bills, you know, that's what they're looking for. And then that, and there's no reason, that shouldn't be public record, and mine as well should all be public record.
Well, according to the attorney, that's attorney-client privilege, I've had to go through and do a summary of them.
Okay, and now, what, um, and, and...
So I do have a summary.
Okay, did he give you an email, or something that said attorney-client privilege?
I've called him, but I will ask him to send that.
To the extent there were, and, and what he's talking about is, if you've got an invoice, that invoice lists out specific matters, right?
Correct.
And those specific matters would have a description generally of what was done.
Yes.
I don't necessarily agree any of that's attorney-client, but what he can do is, he can redact those, he can strike through those and still send the bill, we can go ahead and get that immediately.
So, but we went through and have given all of these, so...
Any comments from the board?
As far as the line, you would have to ask Mr. Copeland that, I don't know where he puts that in the, the budget line.
We'll get with Mr. Copeland. I think we owe it to the public. I, I really do. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I know Dr. Pickles had made mention that we voted on this contract, I have no recollection of that contract, and, and if we have voted on it, I'd like to see a copy of it, to even know what his hourly rate is, 'cause I have no, again, I have no recollection of seeing a contract, I don't know if you have a recollection of it, but I have no recollection of it.
I'd like to have Dr. Pickles provide it for us.
And, and, and with that being said, is there, is there a limit in the contract? Because with, with me sitting here, having to come up with how we're gonna get this money, I have a hard time justifying that we're paying out an attorney that amount of money each month when we're having to cut people. I mean, that's, that's hard, that's hard to stomach as a board member, not saying that you're not entitled to an attorney, not saying that she may need an attorney, but again, out of respect to the board, we should know what's being spent, if ultimately we're gonna be the ones having to pay the bill.
And basically, there's people sitting in this room right now that are one of, that's some of the lowest-paid people that we have in our system, and they're being, their name is on the list with their low pay, you know, which, and, and then we're looking at attorney fees that are...
That are more than their salary for the year.
Way more than their salary. Now, we're not saying that Dr. Pickles has done anything wrong, of course, but we just, we need the information, we need the information.
And again, Mr....
I will have Ms. Bishop email you the contract in the minutes where you approved it, but you did approve it on June twenty-seventh in two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves, could you please, um, guide the board in, in what we need to do to move forward with this, because I, I am only speaking for one board member, but I do... Because I, I am only speaking for one board member, but I do think that, surely, I mean, she is entitled to an attorney if she needs one. But if we're having to, to pay the bill for it, I think that we should have the opportunity to set a limit. Or how does, how would that work of what we're willing to pay before it has to come back before us? Or, or some type of recommendation that you can make being our attorney?
Sure, the board has the right to, I think you could...
Excuse me, thank you.
I think you could direct, now, you probably couldn't at this meeting, this is a workshop. But I think you could agenda this for your next meeting. At that time, have all of the invoices, again, mine, Mr. Dietz's, Mr. Iverson's, everybody's there for the public. And then the board could direct that you do not want, after that time, to pay whatever attorneys you don't wanna pay. And then, but of course, I think you would need to make that provided that the superintendent, if she feels she does need an attorney, can come back and get a approval from the board. So you would, you could require that without, that it not be paid without prior board approval.
Mr. Reeves, I've tried to do some checking, but I haven't been successful about attorneys, superintendents' attorneys. In other words, is there a, something, information about why they, when they would need an attorney, or...
Sure.
Some boundaries, or, I mean, in other words, something that we can go by?
When superintendents are, are separate, in Madison, they're separate elected officer. They, sometimes their duties are, sometimes a conflict arises between their duties and the su- the school board's duties. When those conflicts arise, it's appropriate for the superintendent to have a, their own attorney. For instance, if you've got a, if the superintendent has proposed an employee and the school board finds cause and rejects the employee, the superintendent at that point may wish to go to court to try to force that issue and would need separate counsel for that. Certainly, if the, if there was a termination hearing, there might need to be a separate attorney representing the district before, before the board. You'd have one attorney representing the district before the board, another attorney advising the board. That'd be an instance where you would have two attorneys. Otherwise, it, it has been my, in the past, what I have advised both this board and, and other boards is that it is appropriate for the school, for the superintendent to have a budget that she can draw upon to engage other attorneys from time to time. Because there are times I have found it helpful, if the superintendent did not have a, did not, or questioned some advice I was giving her, she could contact another attorney, they can contact me, we can get it worked out. All of that, though, is subject to budgetary limits. So this board can say, we want to allow the superintendent a certain amount of money to do that, or the, you want to, it would only be with prior approval of the board. You would have those options. The contract, the board is the contracting entity for the district. And if, with, if there's a contract out there, you would have the authority to terminate that contract if you would like.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
I will be happy to go over some of the fees. And, Mr. Reeves, if you had responded to some of the contracts that the board needed, I would not have had to use Mr. Levine to actually prepare some of the contracts. But there were contracts that I had to present to this board, and you were not presenting them or getting back with me in a timely fashion. So I had thirteen thousand dollars this past calendar year. Now, not our fiscal year, but our calendar year. There were contracts with, actually, NFCC this past year, trying to get that, where Mr. Dunkel kept waiting to get hold of you. We had to have a contract, Mr. Levine had to do that. So that was one of our hefty contracts, the MGT contract with some other stuff, trying to do that. So my not hearing back from you pushed me to have to have Mr. Levine prepare some of these contracts. So that was a savings right there that you could have done for me. So when I'm not able to get hold of you to prepare the contracts, I have to turn to somebody else to prepare these. Then I had the outside investigation. And then there are some employee investigations that we're having to do that we are feel that are possibly going to lead to termination. So that's when we use these. So I have the summaries, I will prepare them, and I've gone through them. I will ask Mr. Levine to go ahead and send me the attorney-client privilege email, and then I can do these. I have gone through all of this for another public records request. But I don't mind fiscal year, we've only spent eighteen thousand. And I have not dealt that much with him in the last, probably, month or so. And he's working on one issue right now, but other than that, I have not talked to him that much, other than one particular case. Other than the termination case that we proceeded with and turned over to Mr. Dietz.
Okay, so, so there should be no problem in the future with coming to the board and saying that I've not performed as I should have,
and so you need to engage other attorneys, so is that an agreement?
Yeah.
Okay.
But other than the termination...
As far as I know, no one's is saying that those, those amounts of money at this point should not have been spent. The reason they can't say that is they haven't been provided the invoices. But if what you're saying is my lack of performance made you do that, then you're free to come to the board at any time, bring that up and engage another attorney?
They already know that, I've told them that I have not been able to get hold of you, that I've had to go, so...
Okay, well, you can start doing that in the public.
Mr. Reeves, let me ask you a question. For instance, when someone emails an attorney, is that a, is there a cost to it?
Usually, yes.
Okay, the other day, I asked Mr. Stahlmaker a very simple yes/no question. Mr. Stahlmaker answered with no, I said, oh, okay, I'll finish, no problem. In return, Dr. Pickles sent me an email, CC you and CC her attorney, to say, you should have asked me. Why? I got the information from Dr., Mr. Stahlmaker. Case closed. In other words, we have to pay now, that's, for that answer, which I already got. This costs money every time you email your attorney.
Ms. Gibson, I suggest you refer back to the board policies, which I also told you, I had asked you. And then I also emailed Mr. Reeves to remind all the board members of our board policies. Our staff are now complaining that you're, would you please adhere to the board policy on board-staff communications? You're calling them on the weekends.
This was not the weekend, this was during the day.
You're emailing during the day.
Okay.
All I have asked is that you would please go through Ms. Bishop.
All right.
And give them time.
Okay, I'm still talking about dollars and cents here, though. All right, go ahead.
Mr. Copeland is trying to finish up with auditors in the office. And you're texting him or emailing him, and all I've asked is you, you just coordinate through Ms. Bishop.
I wasn't talking about Mr. Copeland.
Just a moment.
I had a simple question.
And then there was also the issue with Mr. Stahlmaker. All I've asked is that you just go through Ms. Bishop's office. That's all I've asked.
Okay, let me ask Mr. Reeves. Mr. Reeves, in other words, I, as a school board member, I'm not entitled to ask an employee a question, then?
Well, what...
On school time, no, I honor their, you know, I honor their time.
What, what Dr. Pickles is referring to is there is a policy on working through the superintendent. I certainly think that policy should be, should be honored. I think the, the point of your question, though, was there is no policy saying that, there, there is no policy saying that those have to be copied to outside attorneys and engaging and all of that.
Okay, well, with, I, I guess I'm thinking very frugally, and when I see things like that, I think that's money, so that's okay.
Well, Ms. Reeves, in, in relation to that, I have a question. I know back in October, when Ms. Hagan was still on this board, she did a records request of the people in the drop, back in October. Since that time, I've made the request and trying to plan for this year of, of people who are retiring, so we could get a handle of what, where people, who was coming out, who wasn't. I asked for it, and Ms. Gibson asked for it prior to December. We only recently received that the other day from Mr. Stahlmaker. At what point is a board member, is, is, is it adequate time for us to wait for requests? 'Cause again, this was going back when Ms. Hagan was sitting on this board, that she first requested it. Is, is that many months adequate time? When, when, when we're looking at something that's gonna address the budget and us making cuts on people, I mean, I mean, at what, at what point? I mean, I hear what Dr. Pickles is saying about us asking, and we shouldn't be, and I respect that. I will go all inquiries through Ms. Bishop, I respect that. But as a board member sitting here, at what point do we have to keep asking and asking and asking for information and not receiving it? Do we need to do records requests as a, as a public official to get the simple list of the drop participants that we approved? We approve the drop participants when they go into drop. So why is that such a big secret that we're not entitled to? That, that you wait months from October to, to the end of January, we were, we finally received the email of who's in the drop? I, I mean, I have so, I hear what she's saying, and I respect that. I respect all the coordinators and directors and what they're doing. But on the flip side, we should be respected, when we request information, we receive it. And I would like that noted in the minutes, Ms. Bishop, that we have not, that, of that incident. And, and again, all I'm asking for is that when we request things, that we be given that in a timely manner. And, and I don't think from October, November, December, and the end of January, four months is timely. I'm sorry. I mean, do you have anything to add to it? I mean...
No, I, you, you don't have to do a public records request to get those types of, those types of documents. That is the, the way our system is set up. You've got an elected superintendent, she is over the staff of the district, you've got a school board. The power to create and abolish positions rests with the school board. It's very difficult for the school board to exercise that power if you don't get the right information. That all has to be kinda worked out politically between the two.
And, and I wanna say on two occasions, we were told it's on my desk. Well, you know, I, I, I don't know what to say other than, other than at some point, we need the information to know who we have coming out in the drop and where they're coming out, so we can plan accordingly. But, but with that being said about how we now need to go through Ms. Bishop, and I respect that. Ms. Bishop gets us anything we ask for, I cannot say of a more efficient person that we have, we're fortunate to have her. And, and I just hate that she's now caught in the midst of us trying to retrieve information. But that's all I have to say on that.
I'll be happy to go through Ms. Bishop.
I, me too.
Very, very happy. Are any more on that? Okay. Agenda review, review of February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, agenda, Dr. Pickles?
Isaac has it up on the screen. We have several minutes from our recent meetings up there. Under item four point three, we have two joint, joint use agreements. I met with Mr. Cof- Cofman and Mr. Blair. Isaac, could you click on the solid waste agreement there? After meeting with them, they took out the Christmas break and spring break, so we have a slight reduction. And again, this is an estimate, so our cost estimate will be now right around ninety-six thousand. So I think Mr. Ginn was here. Oh, he's here if you have any questions.
I'd like to thank Mr. Ginn for checking on that, I don't know where he is, I, oh, okay, I see you. Thank you, Mr. Ginn.
There's two, under our staff trips, there's two coming out of our leadership grant for the end of February.
And this, this will be none out of the general fund?
No, they're not on a general fund.
No one should be...
Notice I do not have anything listed out of general fund for staff trips.
Thank you, I'm just speaking for myself, but no one should be going anywhere out of the general fund. And I know this is a grant, but...
I have pulled that off, that's no longer an item. But this is from our leadership grant. Under our student trips, there's two for the high school, one for the CTE students, and then one for the marine science students. Then we'll have a policy updates hearing, public hearing, and then we'll have our ESE special hearing. Then, this week, I'll put up our personnel recommendations, depending, I was hoping to have the staffing table revisions. I may go ahead and put a couple, and then we'll wait and see what happens. And then we'll have our monthly financial report. So we have a very small agenda.
This is a question for personnel, are all teaching positions filled at all the schools at this time?
Not at, we have a, no, 'cause we've had a resignation or two.
Could, could we please have the email to us tomorrow, the positions that are open and, and how many at what schools and what positions, please? And, and I personally would like it added on, somewhere on our agenda or at our stations for each meeting, so we always know how many positions we have at schools that are open and how many students are at that school from meeting to meeting.
In each grade level?
In, in a run-in total where, where we, we are, we know at each meeting that there's never an uncertainty of how many students we have and how many teachers we have at the me- at, at school during that two weeks. Please. Do the other board, how do the other board members feel about that?
I think it's very good, I'd like to have all the schools listed in K through twelve, and a number put in each slot. Thank you. Any other comment on that? Superintendent items?
None at this time, other than we're working with DOE right at the moment.
Attorney, Mr. Reeves?
No, ma'am, except you, I don't know if you're gonna come back to this, but are you going to, during this meeting, are you gonna set a future meeting?
Yes, we'll set...
And, and give some kinda deadlines on when you want information and that kind of thing?
Ms. Williamson?
No, the teachers that, the cla- the teachers that we need, are those classroom, their classroom teachers? There's classes without a teacher?
I'm sorry?
We have some classes without a teacher now?
Well, we've made some rearrangements, but we just had a teacher resign, but we've shuffled some people around.
Okay.
For the moment.
That's all. Ms. Bell?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Alfred?
I would just like to congratulate our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Rita Pinkert, an outstanding teacher and very proud of her. Proud of all the teachers that were in the, the list. Quite a selection of Teachers of the Year this year. But again, Ms. Pinkert is a special lady. I had the opportunity of working with her back in nineteen ninety-eight, when I worked at Lee Elementary. She was at the Lee Junior High School then, and I was a speech therapist, and she was on the middle school side and an excellent teacher back then. And I'm sure today, still a great teacher, just very proud of her. The other item that I would like added for our next meeting is the number of who's been moved around and what savings that has done for the district in, in these positions. I know that Ms. Stewart has been moved from Greenville to the high school. And any of the other employees that have been moved from their positions to where they're at, what savings that's brought us.
Ms. Alfred, there's only been two transfers, teacher transfers, that's it. That's the only thing that's been moved.
So, so how are, how are the four positions at Central Field with only two transfers?
She's, um, Ms. Dixon's moved some people around there.
So people have been moved around there?
She's moved some people within the school, correct.
But were there...
But not administrators or anything.
But, but were there, were they people that were in positions that are no longer in the positions that...
No, she's shuffled some of her teachers around. She's collapsed a class or grade level.
But we still have two openings, you said?
We have several openings.
We need to, we need to know the amount.
Because we, I thought we had all of our openings filled, we had an email about that, or it was told.
That was moving forward if you made the cuts.
So we have several openings, you say? Okay.
So, I, I need to clarify this, 'cause I'm a little bit confused.
I'm confused, too.
'Cause, 'cause we did get an email that said all positions are...
And, and we said that night, when y'all rescinded everything, everybody stayed put, other than the two transfers. There were two transfers that those teachers, those two teachers went ahead and moved.
But you have the authority to transfer people, right?
Teachers, yes, those were involuntary transfers.
Because we've got teachers in positions right now, couldn't they be transferred into a class?
I can't move administrators. I can't move administrators. And the others were going to be administrators.
Okay. I was under the impression that all the positions were filled.
That was if it was going to be, the reduction in force was going to take place.
So who's in the classes right now? Subs or who?
Some subs and some teachers, the two teachers that I moved. And then there's been some shuffling of teachers.
See, we're not aware of this, because we haven't been told. That's why we're questioning you right now.
And as Mr. Reeves stated that night, everything was on hold, except for those two transfers.
So some of the teachers that we have that are not in the classroom, you can't move them back to the classroom, they're administrators?
Some of the ones that I had told you originally in the email that were willing to take, go and go into a classroom, were administrators, because their position was on the list.
But we have some teachers who are not in the classroom with a classroom full of kids with no teacher?
We have a sub, or we've shuffled somebody else around, another teacher around right now. We will send you a list.
And can we please have the number of people we're still in need of? Because, I mean, again, that's, I don't know how we can sit here with a straight face and when we know that students still do not have teachers out there.
Well, we were under the impression they did have a teacher.
Absolutely.
I was told they had a teacher. I'm not, I'm in the schools, but I'm not in every class every day to see what's, you know...
I hear what you're saying, Ms. Gibson. I hear, and we got the email.
So I, that's why I'm, I get, this is what, we need the information at all times, really, and especially when it concerns the children. Mr. Daniels?
I just also wanted to congratulate the Teacher of the Year, Ms. Pinkert, as well. Wonderful teacher. And I also want to continue to encourage all of the district staff, teachers, students, bus drivers, everybody that makes up this wonderful district. This has been a tough, challenging time, and from what I understand, morale is very, very low at this time. And I just want to encourage everybody that makes up this wonderful district, continue to be encouraged. Just like every other obstacle, we will get through it.
Thank you. I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Pinkert. I've known her for over thirty years, a wonderful teacher, a wonderful person, a wonderful role model. We just value people like that so much. I'd like to thank all the people that came up to the podium. You're here because you're interested, all of you who came tonight, thank you. And thank you for the suggestions. We appreciate those. And let's, Mr. Reeves, let's, as far as our next meeting goes, and I'm wondering about if the union will have the information for us by Friday, let's say. Mr. Copeland, what do you think about that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because that'll be a voting meeting Friday. All right. How about our, what's the pleasure of the board?
That's fine.
That's fine.
Six o'clock? Madison County High School? Okay. Sounds good.
And just asking, could we have, Mr. Copeland said he would provide it, like what the, an itemized of what we would, as good as you can. Thank you.
All right.
I would sign up for, to speak about things that was not open, because I would have you separated.
Yep.
Yes.
Are we...
I can't hear you from there.
Are you not doing that tonight? Because I saw that you were...
No, we are.
Let's see.
She signed up twice.
You did sign up twice, yes. I, go ahead. You all have an opportunity to speak twice. This is what Ms. Rodrick is doing, speaking about non-agenda items.
Yes, ma'am. And I did want to, just to clarify for you about the rule of the hundred and eighty days. The state, in the past two years, did make an agreement where you can have an equivalency for pre-K through third grade, it's seven hundred and twenty hours, and for fourth grade through twelfth, it's nine hundred hours. Now, I know that doesn't help you this year, but in planning going forward, that may be something that you could look at.
Thank you for that information.
Oh, no problem. I wanted to talk to you, because I did come to you from Jefferson, I worked at DOE, and I saw that the route that Jefferson took, and they took a route of non-action. And we all know where that led Jefferson with Somerset. I can tell you now that if we take no action, we have until the eleventh to get in a plan to the state. If they don't do anything, we are the next Jefferson. Because I can tell you from working at DOE, Somerset is too big to fail. You're not going to see any failing grades come out of that school over there, not for quite some time. And it's given them a way to come in quicker, because, look, they did a great job here. It's doing good. And we are right next door. We are not that far from Tallahassee. I don't want you to go that way. I saw what happened over there. I want y'all to come together as a team and work together. Honestly, it hurts my heart. I'm a teacher first. And I know teachers that lived here, worked for Jefferson County, was Teacher of the Year, highly effective. Somerset came in, he was too high on the pay scale, so guess who got cut first? The other charter starts them higher at first, but they also don't give raises every year. You may work for that charter school for ten years, but you might not ever get a raise. So I just, it hurts me to see another district hurting the way they were, and to feel like the clock's running out on you, and that if we don't do something soon, and trust me, I don't want to be in your seats, I'm not going to lie to you. I would not want to be the person to say, "We have to do, close a school, we have to go to a four-day work week, we have to furlough ten days," I think was discussed tonight, "two weeks of pay. We have to cut anyone out of the equation for the rest of the school year." I don't want that decision. I do not envy you. I just want you to be aware that you no longer have, or we used to have maybe two to five years, six months to a year with the state. They're not doing that anymore. They really aren't. You're going to have maybe a couple weeks. So just, I really pray that you all come together, work together as a team, and get something done.
Ms. Rodrick, you can rest assured, we will make a decision at the next meeting. A decision will be made.
I just worry, I see, I'm coming from there in that background, I do, I just worry. And so I've been praying for all of you.
I think the difference between them and us, we have, we're a B district, we have all highly, we have highly effective schools, no D schools, all A and B, all A, B, and then a C school. So we are, we're not, I don't think the state would look at us and say, "You're a failing school district."
No, but it's the financials that they're going to look at, which is what took them over more than even being the F school.
The money.
Was the money, yeah.
Okay.
Ma'am, are they, are they going to also look at what we would like for next year? If we don't do something now, or make something into plans now, are they going to look at that also, following it for the following year?
Oh, definitely. If you don't have something that shows you're going to be solvent from not just here to June, but going forward, they're definitely going to look at it.
We're going to have to make, we're going to have to make a plan to go along with this, not just with what we do at our next meeting, but there's going to have to be a subsequent plan to follow that says what we're going to do to make us where we are solvent and where we should be. And I don't think that there's anyone here not realizing that, and we're all positioned to make those decisions. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did you sign up for the input?
I signed up earlier. I did not have to sign up.
Yeah, okay, well, in the future, please sign up for both.
I just, I just want to say, I understand how difficult this is for you, but difficult for the teachers and students also, equally, more. But saying that, I want to mention that, Mr. Reeves, you are a wonderful attorney. I'm sure you're very knowledgeable in many aspects. You and your firm, you know, you cover most of Madison County. So now, with you being on the board, and your partners being on so many of these boards, with it being the school board, the county, the Swanee River, I mean, at some point, when the school board has an issue, and I saw this, because I go to the county commissions, when they were addressing the shortfall with the school resource officers. Now you have a conflict. You have a conflict because your attorney is on the board for the school and also on the county commission board. So this is where you need to choose wisely. I can't fault Mr. Reeves. I have to say, the school board needs to consider these things, you know, when you're looking at your attorneys and how you're going to be representative, because if your attorney is representing many other aspects of the county that you'll be working with, it could enter into conflict. This is funds that would, you know, require additional attorney's fees. So just, you know, with that in mind, this is, you know, instance where I want the board to really pay attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. Any further discussion? All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn, Ms. Gibson.
We have a motion by Mr. Alfred, second by Mr. Daniels. Meeting is adjourned.